Happy first day of school evening to everyone here with us in the audience and also watching from home. The August 10th, 2021 meeting of the Marion County School Board is called to order. We are the Marion County School District Leadership Team. When we come together to work, we are efficient, effective, and productive. Our three most important characteristics are dedicated, transparent, and individually responsible. To work well together, we must demonstrate respect, confront reality, and be accountable. We will always put students first, and we will leave a legacy of success. For the courtesy of those listening to the meeting, I'm requesting everyone in the audience, please turn off your electronic devices at this time, or put them on vibrate. Later in the meeting, up to 30 minutes will be provided for individuals to address the board on matters concerning the operation of the Marion County School System or the school board only. Presentations to the board are limited to five minutes and are televised. If you wish to address the board regarding a regular agenda item, or matters on which the board customarily takes action, you must first complete a peach form located on the table in the hallway. If you wish to address the board regarding a public hearing or a student discipline matter, please complete a lime green form. These forms must be fully completed and received by the board secretary no later than 5:40 p.m. The procedures applicable for each are on a separate sheet. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Mrs. Allison Campbell, District One.
Here.
Mr. Eric Cummings, District Three.
Here.
Mrs. Nancy Thoreau, District Four.
Here.
Mrs. Kelly King, District Five.
Here.
Dr. Diane Gullett, Superintendent.
Here.
Mr. Jeremy Powers, School Board Attorney.
Here.
Thank you. It now gives me great pleasure to introduce Mrs. Lori Manressa, Principal of Hillcrest School. And if you would please come forward, Ms. Manressa, and introduce the individual who will be providing us with the inspiration and the pledge this evening.
Absolutely. Good evening. Good evening, board members, Dr. Gullett, Attorney Powers, and Ms. Martinez Lopez. Thank you so much for inviting us to do the inspiration for this evening. I'm going to invite my friend Jasper Roman to join me. I'm going to assist him in the inspiration, and he will lead us in the pledge for this evening. Jasper, if you would like to come up, give us one minute, okay? So, as many of you know, at Hillcrest, we come up with a new acronym every year. And this year, the acronym is BRAVE, which stands for Believe, Respect, and Value Education. In our current world, we clearly understand what that means. But at Hillcrest, it is so much more. Our students believe that the impossible can be possible. They respect the challenges ahead and do so with strength and courage. They value the meaning of never giving up and do so with grace and perseverance. And education, well, that is the journey that opens the doors to endless opportunities. Our students show us every day what it means to be brave. So don't take any day for granted, celebrate even the little things, and believe, respect, and value education. Now it's my friend's turn, Jasper Roman. You ready? Right here. In your outside voice. Ready?
Please stand.
Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you, Jasper. Thank you all very much for the work that you do every day. I'm proud to be a part of it. So thank you, and have a great evening.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Principal Manressa. Thank you, Roman. Thank you, Jasper. I heard him say, "And justice for all." And he emphasized that. And that is what we are all about. Okay, Dr. Gullett, you have some staff introductions.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Thank you, Jasper. Great way to kick off our evening tonight. I am pleased to introduce to you some members that you have prior, you voted on in prior meetings, and they're just a great addition to our team. So as I call their name, if they could just stand so that you can see them and say hello and welcome them to our Marion County family. I'll start with, no particular order, Lauren DeBick, who's there in the back. She is serving as our Community Engagement Director. We're delighted that we were able to steal her away from Ocala Health, and she's already been a great addition to our team. And Victoria Thomas, over here in the corner. She is the new principal at Bellevue Elementary. We're delighted that she is leading Bellevue. Chad Frazier, I think many of you have met, who's our new area superintendent of secondary schools, doing a great job already. And we stole him away from Lake County, so we're glad to have him on the team. We're good at borrowing. And we have great members here as well, such as Danielle Livingood, who's one of our very own Marion County members for a very long time. And we're just thrilled that she is serving to support secondary curriculum instruction and digital learning. She's also supporting North Marion High, too, as they're acclimating to her loss there. But big shoes to fill. LeAnn McCurchan, who is now the principal at Greenway Elementary, formerly Assistant Principal at Hamlet Bowen, just another great member of our team and doing a great job starting off the year. Thank you. And Carol Sales, who's not with us, is the new North Marion High School Principal, who'd spent many years at North Marion High as an Assistant Principal. How many years, Danielle?
This is her 30th year total.
Yes. North, 19 years.
She was there when I was a para.
She's been a long time and will continue to help lead that and fill those shoes. So wanted to say welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Gullett. And on behalf of the whole board, welcome to Ms. DeBick, Ms. Thomas, Mr. Frazier, Ms. Livingood, Go Colts, and Ms. Leandra, I didn't catch your last name. But we're happy to have you and thrilled to have you as part of our Marion County Public Schools family. So here we go.
Thank you.
All right. And now we're going to please welcome April Griffin with the Florida School Boards Association. Good evening.
Hello. I just have to say that I'm a former board member in Alachua County, and the start of this meeting made me miss being a school board member for the first time in a long time. So thank you very much.
Yep.
My name is April Griffin, and I'm here tonight to present your Florida School Boards Association Certified Board, Certified Master Board plaque. And I can tell you a little bit about that. But I served on the Alachua County School Board for two terms, and I am a past president of the Florida School Boards Association. And currently, I'm one of the consultants in the Professional Leadership Development Program. This, the Master Board Program is designed to strengthen the governance team, which is the board members and the superintendent working together. And we're trying to increase their effectively, effectiveness, sorry, efficiency and collective, the way you work together. And research shows that there's a direct correlation between the effectiveness of the school board and superintendent relationship and how well they work together, and its student achievement increasing. And it's been, the research has been going on for 15 or more years, and there's a direct correlation. And I just thank you for continuing to renew and to learn and to enrich yourselves as you work together. So here's your plaque. And I guess, could y'all come down and get it?
Sure.
Have a picture?
Whatever you say.
Okay. Now look at me telling y'all what to do.
They're listening.
Teachers never change.
Unless I give it to them. So, oh, chair. This is my good side, I guess.
Every side is your good side.
That's right.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations.
Thank you, April, for coming down and presenting that to us. It's definitely a continuous growth process, and we enjoyed it. Okay, moving right along.
Good evening. I recommend approval of the agenda for the August 10th, 2021 School Board meeting with the materials in the board packet, those materials distributed to board members at the meeting, and the audio recording included as part of the official record of the meeting.
Thank you. May I have a motion on the superintendent's recommendation, please? Moved by Board Member Cummings, seconded by Vice Chair King. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the May 25th, 2021 School Board meeting? Moved by Vice Chair King, seconded by Board Member Cummings. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion passes unanimously. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the June 3rd, 2021 Administrative Briefing and Work Session? Moved by Board Member Cummings, seconded by Vice Chair King. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to persons requesting to address the board, I will now ask the school board's attorney to explain the rules governing persons who wish to address the school board tonight. Good evening, Attorney Powers.
Good evening. Thank you, Ms. Thoreau. In compliance with Section 286.0114 of Florida statutes, the school board has adopted uniform procedures for public speakers who wish to speak at tonight's meeting, either regarding one of tonight's agenda items or a matter relating to the operations of the school district. These procedures will ensure the public has a reasonable opportunity to be heard on school board and school district matters. A written summary of these procedures is available from the table in the hallway. Public speaker forms are also located on the same table. The completed forms were due to the school board secretary no later than 5:40 p.m. Tonight's speakers will be called prior to the business portion of the school board's meeting in the order of receipt by the school board secretary. Before you begin speaking, please state your full name and address for the record and spell your last name. Each speaker will have five minutes of time. However, if there are more than five persons who wish to speak, the school board may limit, may seek consensus to limit each speaker's time to three minutes. When the speaker has one minute remaining, the speaker will receive a visual notice from me to complete his or her comments. Speakers may not yield their time to other people. Speakers and meeting attendees are expected to conduct themselves in a respectful manner. Therefore, verbal attacks and profanity are strictly prohibited. Pursuant to the procedures for public comments, Item 6, speakers are not to identify specific individuals other than themselves or their child unless the statement is provided 24 hours in advance. The board is here to listen to your comments only. You may be directed to an administrator staff member following the conclusion of your comments for further assistance to address your concerns. If there are matters dealing with student discipline, including expulsions, they will be scheduled at the conclusion of the telephied portion of the meeting. Parents may address the board regarding a discipline matter at that time. To ensure student privacy, only a parent or guardian may use students' first or last name. Identifying references to or identification of other students and/or their families are also strictly prohibited. A public speaker's speech does not reflect the endorsement, sponsorship, position, or expression of the school district. Thank you for your attention to the board's requirements. Madam Chair, that concludes my explanatory remarks, and thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Powers. Ms. Martinez Lopez, do we have any speakers tonight?
We do. Mr. Mark Avery.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Mark Avery, A-V-E-R-Y, and I am the President of the Marion Education Association. I reside at 3 Diamond Ridge Way, Ocala, Florida, 34472. I come to you tonight to implore you to make some financial decisions, which you, over the last year, have been doing more than normal. And I say that because all three bargaining units went to impasse this year, and the board imposed financial restrictions, or I don't want the restriction not the right word, but financial pay for all three of those units. The governor has decided in this last week to give money to just classroom teachers and principals. And we just had a wonderful presentation from Hillcrest, and of any school in our district, that takes a village to help those students succeed. And there's not one employee in this district that has not gone above and beyond over the last year and a half since COVID has started. And I'm asking the board to do the right thing in the district and provide compensation equal to what the governor has provided for the remaining employees, which is about half of the school district. The money started hitting checks this week, and I will tell you, or this weekend, I will tell you, people are upset, even in within their own families. So a daughter posted that she was excited that she got her $1,000 and said, "Oh, thank you" to the governor. Well, mom's a media specialist, and mom wasn't happy about that because she didn't get $1,000. So it's our opportunity to show the employees how much you value them, all the employees, and not just my unit, but the bus drivers, custodians, and non, every employee that did not receive this. I think that you could do the right thing and follow the governor's lead and provide them with some money. And I don't want us to just be, well, we'll think about it, we'll talk about it. Because I've already been told that discussion has been happening, but now other people are getting money, so let's get some action going. Let's get this rolling so that it's not down the road. Other districts are ahead of us. Alachua is going to have the money in the people's hands this weekend, and they, before this weekend, and they agreed to it over the weekend. And they agreed for just a little bit more to help with the tax implication for the employees. So we can follow suit on this one that doesn't go against the governor's mass recommendation, and it's not going to get us in those waters that we're trying to stay out of, okay? So that's what I'm asking for the district to do the right thing and show the employees, finally, that you are thanking them for all the extra work that they've done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Avery. If you'll hold on just a second. Vice Chair King, you have something?
I do have something. Usually, I, it's not in our protocol to normally speak on, you know, when something is, but this is definitely a hot topic. I do want you and all of our employees that did not receive a check to understand that our superintendent, well, actually, our board, we did discuss it a couple months back. Our superintendent and her staff have been working on this. I was going to wait and bring it up as concerns later on this evening. There are some things that need to be worked out, and I believe Ms. Boston Ellis is going to speak a little bit more to that on Thursday, on August 12th. So please, those of you that are upset and angry, just take a deep breath. We're looking out for you. I think you guys are going to be very pleased with what will be presented, but I think there's just a couple of things that need to be ironed out. And we hear you loud and clear with the final, you know, we understand the flat $1,000 and the tax stuff and the tax, you know, so they're working on it. And please don't think that we are ignoring, because you're absolutely correct. Every one of our employees are equally important, and this district would not have ran last year without any of them. So.
And let me add on to that as well. We actually talked about it before the governor did. Way, when this thing first started, we had already started discussing this, if you guys remember. And so we're asking, what we're asking our employees is just to be patient just a little while with us, because we're going to do what's right. We're going to do what's right.
That's absolutely right. And while it may take our district a little bit longer, we may be a little slower, but we're solvent. And we will always make sure that we are, so that the employees can count on their jobs and can count on the support when they really need it. And thank you for bringing this forward tonight. We're well aware, and we are 100% with you on this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I concur with my fellow board members. Thank you for coming again to share with us that this is definitely something that's on our radar, and just give us a little bit more time. Thanks for your patience.
All right. Is there anyone else? All righty. May I have a motion to approve consent agenda items C6.1 through C18.1? Moved by Board Member Cummings, seconded by Vice Chair King. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Yep, we hear you. Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the following cash or tangible donations that have a total value of $9,001. $2,500 to College Park Elementary from their business partner Meadowbrook Church via the Public Education Foundation of Marion County. $1,001 to Marion County Public Schools Mental Health and Wellness Department from Husk, this is a tough one to pronounce. I will just say H.P. Patel. Thank you. $2,000 to Saddlewood Elementary School from Billy and Patricia Duckworth. $3,500 to Silver River Museum from the Cannon Law Firm. May I have a motion, please? Moved by Board Member Cummings, seconded by Vice Chair King. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
And the motion passes unanimously. Board Member Cummings, would you like to give our thanks tonight?
Again, as always, we truly appreciate all of our business partners, our community relations that we have built with this district. It is truly wonderful that we have so many people that are, are great contributors to our schools and education. So we thank you. And please, don't stop giving now, keep giving. Keep giving. So thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Cummings. We'll move on now to Board Committee reports and concerns with a few reminders. The following Administrative Briefing and Work Session is scheduled for August 12th, 2021, at 9:00 a.m. The purpose of the work session is to discuss capital budget and other funds, two of three, five-year work plan, two of two, interagency updates, and COVID-19 updates. The next Administrative Briefing and Work Session is scheduled for August 19th, 2021, at 9:00 a.m. The purpose of the work session is to discuss continuation of budget review, three of three, terminal pay and benefits for employees, Early Childhood Learning Academy, Howard Academy Committee, and COVID-19 updates. We'll go ahead and move on to committee reports, concerns, and comments. Board Member Campbell, would you like to go first, since you're on a tight schedule?
Thank you so much. I appreciate it. And thank you again, fellow board members and those who have worked to make this possible for me to be able to call in tonight. Thank you so much. I appreciate it. For the community, if you haven't been made aware, I'm in Orlando. There's an award ceremony for the Florida Public Relations Association, and I believe I'll be receiving at least three awards, and that's a professional thing. So I'm grateful for the opportunity to be here this evening and be able to participate in the board meeting via phone. I was very grateful today for a wonderful first day of school. I was personally on, I believe, 10 different campuses today, participating in morning car lines and afternoon car lines and cafeteria duty and wiping down tables with HDOCs and all of those things that our employees are doing on a daily basis. And everybody took it in stride. Were there some hiccups along the way? Absolutely, just like any first day of school might happen. But our employees were doing such an amazing job all day long, and I couldn't credit them more. So it's interesting that Mr. Avery was there to talk about that, because it really does take everyone to ensure that every child is receiving what he or she needs on a daily basis. And so just a great start to school. I know that some counts that we're already seeing are higher than we've ever had. I know one of the high schools higher than we've ever had for our first day, at least in the, in the recent past. So that's also good news. But I just wanted to stress how excited I was today to be on so many different campuses and, and just seeing students back, because that's what we're here for. That's the whole reason that we do what we do in Marion County Public Schools, just because of those students. And so they're going to be amazing and have a terrific year this year. I just believe that. And just to bring the point up, I saw lots of masks. I saw lots of faces. And everyone seemed to be working together very, very well. Cafeterias are still spacing out in the elementary schools as much as they can than in our high schools. And we're having, you know, outdoor gatherings, and they're outdoors a lot. And so I just saw a lot of things that were very positive today. And so I'm just grateful for the amazing staff that we have all throughout Marion County Public Schools and all that they've done. And I'm looking forward to seeing you all in person again on Thursday at the work session and where we can continue doing great work together. And I'm also so sorry I wasn't there today for the FSBA Master Board presentation, but I am excited that we, as a board of four, are all Master Board trained through the Florida School Board Association. So that's all I had. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Board Member Campbell. Okay, Board Member Cummings.
Good evening, everybody. I'm glad to be back. With today being the first day of school, I want to welcome back all of our students, parents, staff, and I'm praying for a safe and productive year as we get back to the work of educating these kids. And I want to take this moment to first, to strongly, strongly encourage each of you, each of you to please take the necessary precautions to be safe. To all of my fellow board members and the superintendent, I would be remiss if I failed to take this opportunity to thank all of you in this district with the deliberate diligence of hard work that you do for our students every day, our schools, our district, our, trying to make them second to none to those who are striving to make a difference with each and every student that we have. So I want to thank you all for what you're doing. Sometimes it's not said enough, thank you, but I think saying thank you goes a long way. My mama told me that if people do something nice to you, for you, or do the right thing, you at least have enough common sense to say thank you. So I want to thank our district at the start of the year, because they are doing some great things. I also thank, it will also be irresponsible for me not to mention that we still in the midst of a pandemic. And because of the COVID-19 virus and because of this pandemic, I want to strongly, with extra emphasis, encourage our staff, our parents, our students to please wear your mask, please stay safe, please do whatever you need to do in regards to what your doctors or your medical personnel are telling you to do to stay safe. Now, I know that there are some people out there that would say that the virus is a hoax. It's not. It's not a hoax. Some would even say that if kids get it, they will be all right. Well, I say to those that make that statement, and I ask this question, why would you want any, to see any kid, any child, sick and suffering with the illness, whether it's an allergy, whether it's a cold, whether it's a chickenpox or COVID-19? I personally don't want to see any kids sick. Some people say it's just a few kids that have gotten sick and hospitalized or even died from this virus. But what if it was your child, your grandchild, your niece, your nephew, who fell into that feud group? Why are we gambling with the health and welfare of our children? As a parent, I personally know the pain, the agony, and frustration of being at the hospital bedside of a child who is sick, and you don't know if that child is going to make it. And all you can do for that child is ask God to allow you to let your baby be healthy and allow you to let your child make it. Somebody may have never been there, but I've been there. When you're there at the bedside, and you're trying to reason with God, and you're trying to make deal with God, saying, "God, if you bring my child through this situation, I'll do things different. I'll be a better person. I'll make a difference in this world." So tonight, to all of you, my board members, to the district, to the parents that are watching this, to everyone, my plea to all of you is that each of you will please do the right thing, keep these kids safe. And with that being said, I feel I have an obligation to mention to this board that the local positivity rate is continuing to rise. Last Thursday, when we were in the work session, the positivity rate was at 24.5%. Today, we're hovering around 27.5%. That tells me that locally, things have not gotten better, but are progressively getting worse. And as a district, I pray that we're going to revisit our decision, I didn't say your decision, our decision as a board, that we made earlier this year, this summer, to make things optional. We made that decision using the information that we had at that time. We made that decision when numbers were going in a different direction. I think as a board, we have an obligation. I think as a board, we have an obligation and a duty to adjust when we need to make adjustments and be flexible. I know, I know this issue has become politicized. For whatever reason, I don't believe health and welfare should be politicized. I know our districts have been threatened with the loss of funding because of mandates. I know, as recently as last night, I saw where board members and superintendents have been threatened to follow certain orders or they won't get paid. Well, I didn't get into this for pay. I didn't get into this for the money. I'm not independently wealthy, but I just trust that God is going to take care of me. And I know that we have to make decisions, whether they're tough or easy. We have to make decisions. So I'm going to ask this board again, sooner than later, to reconsider where we were a few weeks ago when we made the decision to make masks optional. I gave a great option. I said, "Let parents opt out instead of us opting everyone out." I think that parents want to have control, so they have control if they're opting out. I think we have to be very responsible with this situation. I don't believe in rolling dice. I don't play the lottery. I don't gamble. And I definitely don't want to gamble with kids' life and kids' health. It only takes one kid to pass away in our district from something like this, and then everybody's going to run around like chickens with their heads cut off, scrambling, trying to make a difference. Why wait till that one kid has to die? Why are we waiting to make a decision, temporary decision, not asking for anything permanent, but temporarily? At least do something to keep our people safe and keep these kids safe. And finally, to the students, today is the first day of school. Every kid in the district has the same GPA today. It's up to you to keep it. That's my comments.
Thank you, Board Member Cummings. Vice Chair King.
Well, you make it difficult to follow you. But I am going to--I was going to discuss a couple of things this evening, and one of them was already discussed about the checks that will be, you know, soon to all employees. And when we say all, that means all. So don't think you're excluded. So basically, if you didn't get a check, you will. You're the one that will, just for clarification purposes. Also, I would like to personally thank the county board of commissioners. Last week, I had the opportunity to visit them, and they had a contest called the--to help our bus brigade. And there was, like, they had thousands of materials, actually, because they had a contest and stuff like that. And our bus drivers were there to help pick up the supplies, and they were so enthusiastic, and they were so nice. And I couldn't help but think that if I was a student, I would want to ride their bus because they were just that much fun and stuff. So I personally would like to thank them. And also, you know, other organizations and churches have also been, you know, filling the bus or whatever they want to call it, to look after our students that may be coming to school without their supplies. So thank you for looking out for our community and for our most precious resource, which is our children. Also, I just want to tell everybody, welcome back. We are so grateful that you are here. And this is a tough year, and there's obstacles. And whether the obstacle be COVID, whether the obstacles be programs not working, or things just aren't working out the way they should, just maybe take a moment and just relax and reflect and make sure that you're not being an obstacle to yourself. And because it's easy to go down that road a little bit sometimes, you know? Am I, are you, am I or you, you know, doing things to make things maybe worse than what they already would be? In my--I would like to encourage everybody to stay laser-focused on why you're here. And teachers, that is to give your students a good, quality education that they deserve. And students, you're here to stay laser-focused, to get the education that you deserve. All this other stuff is outside noise. That's all it is. Outside noise. Stay focused. Remember why you're here. Remember what's important. And as you were saying, Mr. Cummings, it's important that everyone stays healthy. But there's several ways to stay healthy, whether it be emotional health, physical health, spiritual health. Stay healthy and don't be an obstacle. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair King. Dr. Gullett?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. I'd like to share some data from our first day today. I think the data often tells its own story. So today, we had thirty-seven thousand five hundred and fifty students present. You may wonder, what was it like last year? Last year, on day one, we had thirty-two thousand four hundred and seventy-five. So we already started the year this year, about five thousand more than a year ago. And that included last year, that included online as well.
Wow.
And so you may wonder, before this pandemic, two years ago, we had thirty-eight thousand seven hundred and fourteen. So we're right about within a thousand on the first day count that we were before the pandemic. Pretty close. I want to also provide some numbers on our bus riders. So some of our challenges, all right, with our bus drivers, phenomenal job from our bus, from our transportation team. And thanks to Ms. Roar, who's here, who I probably hasn't slept in a couple of weeks. You look great, but I know you probably haven't slept. So, but this number tells a story. So today, twenty-one thousand seven hundred and eighty, seven hundred and eighty-five students--let me say that again, twenty-one thousand seven hundred and eighty-five students rode the bus today. Okay? Last year, seven thousand four hundred and eighty-three students rode the bus. So if you do the math, it's nearly three times the number of students on a bus today as there was a year ago. So I start that with tremendous thanks, joining you as the board and expressing thanks to--we have a shortage of bus drivers, but they pulled together and they got the students there. And yes, we had especially some challenges in Zone Three. But I ask for patience for our community at large. I know it's frustrating. I know as a parent, it's frustrating. But they're working so hard and so creatively to make sure the students arrive to school and home safely. And so we're three times the number of bus riders today. So I just, I ask for patience and thank the team for their diligence. But I too want to share that what was shared earlier is our first day is a testament to our entire family, to our Marion County family. I find it to be, and I found my day in the schools today and in talking with debriefing with the leadership team this afternoon, I found the day to be inspiring because despite all the challenges that we face, despite the fact that we're in a pandemic, and I call it a marathon, it's a marathon we're running, we did this last year, and we will continue to do this. And we will continue to stay focused and try to quiet the noise and do all that we can to make sure that our staff and our students are safe physically and mentally and emotionally. And so I thank our entire team, our entire school family, and I thank the parents in the community for helping us with that. Because what I saw today was joy in spite of everything. I saw joy. I saw it behind the mask and the eyes, and I saw it with mask off. But everyone I spoke to said, "We're so happy to be here, and we're excited to see the students and welcome them back." And that was pure, that was genuine. And so that positivity that extended to, through the custodians and our lunchroom staff, cafeterias serving breakfast and through lunch, everyone who worked so hard to make sure that students felt welcome today. And despite all of that, we will persevere, and we will remain flexible, and we will do what we need to do. But I found it to be very inspiring, and we will continue to rise to the challenge. So, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Gullett. Attorney Powers?
Dr. Gullett did a great job of outlining the data. I will just say, I can speak anecdotally to say that my children accounted for two of those numbers today. And they report a wonderful day. I met with all of their teachers at orientations, and I got to see eight teachers that are absolutely dedicated to their jobs and their positions, and obviously were doing something right. And just a big thank you to our staff for what they've, what they do for parents and what they do for kids. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Attorney Powers. Ms. Martinez-Lopez?
No, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Well, I'd like to start with some congratulations and shout-outs, first of all, to our very own superintendent, Dr. Gullett. I received a letter today that informed me, so I want to inform all of you that Dr. Gullett has successfully completed her program and condition requirements of the Florida Superintendent's Special Certification Program. And it is incredibly challenging. It's an extensive program designed specifically for Florida superintendents that includes training in school law, school finance, collective bargaining, the superintendent's leadership role in improving student achievement, and core concepts of leadership. Additionally, Dr. Gullett satisfactorily completed the Florida Superintendent's Exam to demonstrate an understanding of the information and knowledge presented through this training. And Dr. Gullett is to be commended, and it says right here, "For your efforts to expand and build on the skills and knowledge necessary to lead this school system in today's complex society." And we've been hearing a lot about that tonight and for the last, seems like forever. And this certification and acknowledgement is so important that elected superintendents do, are entitled to receive an extra $2,000 per year salary supplement. So it's that important, it's that comprehensive, it's a tremendous accomplishment, and I think it is a testament to our highest level of leadership's passion and commitment to continuing their education and continuing their growth all along the way. So, Dr. Gullett, congratulations on that very important accomplishment. And this letter was sent courtesy of our Commissioner of Education and Mr. Bill Monford, the Chief Executive Officer of FAS. So congratulations, ma'am. And yes, thirty-seven thousand five hundred students, twenty-one thousand seven hundred and eighty-five rode the bus today. I was on the bus with some of them to Oak Crest, and I will tell you, they were fresh, they were happy, they were ready. They could not wait. We got to the, we got to Oak Crest about ten minutes early, which is really a bummer. Because they were so ready to just get off the bus, but they hung in there, and I set my cellphone as a stopwatch, you know, for the countdown. And when they had the chance to go in, they were just all smiles, and it just reminded me of all over again. This is, you know, why we do what we do and why we are where we are. And when it comes to all of the rest of it, yes, you know, we have been incredibly battle-tested. We did go through this last year. It was definitely a learning curve. I would like to think that we've learned a lot throughout the process. And one thing that I have learned is that there are so many layers of mitigation. And we're not going to agree on all of them. I think people's minds are pretty set at this point, what they're willing to do and what they're not willing to do. So I would like to focus on what everybody is willing to do and put a challenge out to all of us because we're not against each other. We are 100% with each other. And in my mind, it seems to be really important to have a Plan B because we all agree that having kids in school and getting the best education we can give them during their one shot at pre-K through 12 is the most important thing. And in order to do that, we have to have our own Plan B. And making sure that every student that walks on our campus is healthy and ready to start the day. And that can be very difficult for working parents. We are the largest employer in Marion County. And please remember that if your child has any symptoms, that could take out 20 others. So hopefully, we can continue to band together and unite through all of our contacts so that if your child really does need to stay home, that you've got someone safe to leave them with, so that we can continue to do the job that we are laser-focused on, which is taking care of our kids, taking care of each other, and giving them the best education possible. We have to continue to be brave. Our kids are counting on us. And the belief and the respect and the value for education is right up there. That's what we live for. And I know that we'll continue to be flexible. I know that we'll continue to be fluid. Our in-town schools are very different than our rural schools. In our rural schools, a lot of the kids don't see each other outside of school. That's why they can't wait to get to school, you know, for the social piece of it. Our in-town schools, they're playing with their brothers and their cousins and everybody else's extended family, you know, all day, every day, without, well, hopefully they have something on, but it's probably not masks. And then they come into school and they're all together again. So I'd really like to focus on what each of us is willing to do in the spirit of being as united as we possibly can because we know what's best for kids. We've done our survey. It's been very clear what our families and our community and our employees want. I am 100% open to doing another one, just a duplicate. Sorry, Mr. Ayers. And hearing how people are feeling. I'm getting a lot of anecdotal information. I will say that I'm getting more emails now when before it was really none on one side of this mask issue. And so it's very clear that there's disagreement on that. But again, let's work on what we do agree on, and then let's take care of the areas where we see that there are problems, to make sure that every school, every child is protected in the best way that they can be. And when I try to think about how to lead and how to organize my own thoughts, sometimes I just really have to write it down. And that's what I did last night. And this whole mask thing has really been on my mind, so I wrote it out, and here's what I came up with. And I said, "To mask or not to mask? That is the question. Such a simple subject has created so much dissension. Why not mask?" some may ask. "A simple enough task." "No, no," say others. "Coverings cannot be good. Resist the suggestion. You can and you should." But what if the motivation is to pit me against you? And while we're busy fighting, politicians can do what they do. So let's use our good brains and kind hearts that we have to remember that it may not be the mask that is bad. It's all in the using. Let's keep them clean. Change them out often and be aware of the scene where they really aren't needed and can take a good break. You're doing a little and for everyone's sake. Then when Halloween comes, if this virus has passed, will we wonder then, was this really about masks? So, take that for what you will. There are people that simply cannot wear masks and will not wear masks. We have special needs kids that made it through all last year with no masks on, but they needed the access to be in school. And myself, I've got my Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccination. I have terrible sinus and asthma troubles. That's why I wear the paper mask. When I go into schools, I feel like that that's being respectful because I do go from school to school, and I don't want to get it and then have them trying to contact trace me would be miserable, and it would take out a lot of people. So I just hope that we all think about what we each can do individually and remember that we are for each other. And don't let anyone, don't let this noise convince you any different. We are much better than that. So, those are my thoughts for today. I could not be more excited about the start of the school year. I am sensing this optimism, this enthusiasm. It was great to see Mr. Viennello bright and early at the transportation compound this morning. There's something about driving in there, seeing all those buses firing up and the lights flashing and, you know--
He's early in the morning.
Yeah, they're going to get their kids. It's amazing. And I met such a nice driver this morning, and boy, am I getting old because her two nephews were students in the classroom where I was a paraprofessional at North Marion High in 1997. And they're married now and have their own kids. And so we just caught up on everything. It was awesome. So, anyway, let's just rock on and get through this year. I think it's going to be our breakout year, but that's just me. I think it's going to be our breakout year, but that's just me. And if the Cleveland Browns can do it, so can we. Let's go. All right, is there anything else for the good of the cause? All right, well, moving on to more sobering matters. I wish to acknowledge that board members have received the alternative placement list for students through July 22nd, 2021. Ms. Martinez Lopez, are there any parents who have submitted a timely request to speak on their child's disciplinary matter?
No, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Oh, okay. Okay, all right, thank you. So, there being no further business, may I have a motion to adjourn? Move by Vice Chair King. Second by Board Member Cummings. All those in favor say aye. Aye. And the motion passes unanimously, and we are adjourned at 6:20 p.m. Thank you very much.